All right, good morning, everyone. It is a few minutes past 10:00 our normal starting time. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the City Utilities Committee. I'm Howard Shook, Vice Chair. Alex Wong is here. Matt Westmoreland is here. I'm sure others will be walking in hopefully shortly. So I cannot call the meeting to order or conduct any other business. However, we can and will get started on our presentations. Delay that, we now have a quorum.
Good morning and welcome to the January 28th meeting of the City Utilities Committee. I'm Councilmember Antonio Lewis. I'm joined by councilmembers starting from my left to my right. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Councilmember Andrea Boone. From my right, Councilmember Howard Shook, and Councilmember Alex Wong. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? It's been moving properly second. Can we have a... Mr. Johnson, please open the vote. Mr. Johnson is a Philadelphia Eagles fan. He happy today.
Mr. Chair, you repeat the mover and secondor?
The mover was Councilmember Wong. The secondor was Councilmember Shook.
The vote is open? The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes? It's been moving properly second. Moved by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Shook. Please open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
The 2025 goals and objectives have been distributed to all members for your review. Please send any recommendations for 2025 goals and objectives to myself and Mr. Johnson by Friday, February 21st. We should be prepared to review and adopt them no later than the February 25th minutes. Today, we have public comment. How many people do we have signed up?
Mr. Chair, we have no one sign up for public comment.
Okay. So we'll move right into our presentations. Today, we have three presentations. We'll start with the Office of Sustainability and Resilience Quarterly Update.
Good morning, committee. This is Chandra Farley. I'm the Chief Sustainability Officer, lead the Mayor's Office of Sustainability and So I always like to start with the mayor's vision, as this mayor's vision is directly related to our work in the Office of Sustainability and Resilience. For me, I always really verbalize this as a vision for environmental justice. This is the team. I'll be excited to add a couple of additional positions to the team this year to really round out our office, which will be very helpful for the growing load of work that we have and to shift some capacity on priority initiatives. And always like to remind us all of the mission for our office, particularly that we lead with science-based analysis informed by the community. And so generally, I start these presentations with our goals. This year for 2025, as we worked over the last year internally with departments and with community through our Climate Resilience Advisory Board, formerly known as the Clean Energy Advisory Board, which I will talk about, we've updated these goals. But I'd like to go back to the process that we've undertaken really for the last 18-plus months with various stakeholder engagement activities, community engagement activities, sustainability innovation labs internally with the multiple departments that we work with, all getting ready to develop the city's first climate resilience action plan. So you've heard me talk about the Clean Energy Plan that was adopted by City Council in 2019. That plan was written to be updated every three years to align with the Integrated Resource Plan process in front of the Public Service Commission for our utility. So we will be updating our targets. However, we won't be producing a new clean energy plan. We will be producing the city's first climate resilience action plan to make sure we're taking a broader look at the city's sustainability and resilience goals within the context of how climate is impacting the city of Atlanta. So the result of the work over the last year plus was the development of our Climate Resilience Action Plan framework. So you'll see sort of that our goals roll up to this framework. We also did some work with Fannie Mae to do the Phase One of our climate vulnerability assessment, which was to identify our climate perils. As we talked to community about this, as we did at the Climate Resilience in Nature Chapter Plan A meeting a couple of weeks ago, not a lot of surprises here on that. So now we have this framework to move forward in building out our action plan. We'll be launching a community-wide engagement effort in the spring, likely March, and we'll work on building actions that roll up to these goals. And so that is where you will see some of our goals that have already been updated, such as our greenhouse gas emissions reductions goal, which has now been updated to align with population growth and in line with industry metrics and measurements that we report to for science-based targets. So I want to talk about some of the wins. I talked about this at our Quarter Four presentation. We've had a lot of opportunities to partner with national philanthropic initiatives like Bloomberg and Bezos. We were fortunate in partnership with a lot of our departments to be awarded or selected for a number of federal funding grants. I will talk about that later, obviously in the context of the posture of the new federal administration, and a number of rising rankings in a number of agencies that we report to. The American Council for an Energy-Efficient Economy that ranks cities on their energy efficiency and community engagement practices. We rose two in the rankings for that. We are still in the top three for number of Energy Star certified buildings. And we also took a big jump in our rankings for our electric fleet, which we will talk about as well. So always like to remind folks with our clean energy goals, when City Council adopted the Clean Energy Plan in 2019, they also adopted interim targets. Our goal is to be at 30% clean energy by 2025. That is this year. So this is a big milestone year. We've been doing a lot of reviewing of our metrics, trying to understand, but the top-line message that I want everyone to be clear on is that city of Atlanta's energy mix is Georgia Power's energy mix. So whatever Georgia Power's energy mix is, that is the city's energy mix because we don't generate our own electricity. Now, what is important, so that's where you'll see that about, okay, we're about 18% towards our goal. We have also submitted two applications to Georgia Power to procure more renewable energy. They have again delayed a decision on that. That is something we expect to take up again in the Integrated Resource Plan process that will kick off in front of the Public Service Commission late next month, early March. So we still remain very dependent on them in meeting our goals, but are looking forward to some new models and programs, such as virtual power plants, that we may be able to look at in this process this year. So we're super excited as we talk about those clean energy goals, that the solar that we add on our municipal facilities, the solar that the community adds on their homes is on top of that solar amount that Georgia Power has. So it's still a small amount, but we're super excited that we've almost doubled the amount of solar on municipal buildings since Mayor Dickens has taken office. We still have the largest municipal solar program in the state. So we want to continue with that, but one of the primary focuses for me in my office this year is bigger projects. The fire stations are important. There are recreation centers are important, particularly because we have two of the largest recreation centers in the southeast, CT Martin, Roselle Fan. But we need some bigger projects. So I've been talking with Deputy Commissioner Kanika Greenlee, looking at opportunities like landfill solar. What are some of those bigger opportunities for us to really leapfrog towards our goals? Electric vehicles. We have done a lot of work on electric vehicles. Deputy CSO John R. Seidel, our interdepartmental EV working group, the airport DPW, DOT, Office of Fleet Services, and others really want to thank them for their partnership. We've been awarded just over $15 million in federal funding for two projects. I will talk about at the end sort of the federal funding posture, although we did get an unexpected notice just last week that one of those awards was moving forward. So our posture is to continue to respond to all the contract paperwork requests and to keep that moving, independent of sort of what we are hearing about the executive orders and all the news that is coming out, because when we do get communication, we need to respond to those requests quickly. So when we do get yes, no, move forward, we need this, we're ready. We are, if you've been in the Government Center parking deck lately, you will have seen some new charging infrastructure in the Government Center deck. So we'll be excited to have a ribbon cutting for that, where we will talk about the electric vehicle readiness ordinance update that was adopted by Council a couple of weeks ago. We've got some electric vehicle workplace certifications that covered about 30 of our sites across the city and this project at the Government Center parking deck. So we're really looking forward, really looking forward to that. As we talk about one of our goals, one of the mayor's goals is to reduce energy burden on 10% of our most overburdened population. As we all know, and I state very clearly, depending on which data set you're looking at, Atlanta remains in the top three to five for most energy burden cities in the entire nation. So addressing our energy burden issue for our resident population is critically important. Weather Eyes ATL, our home repair program that we had been rolling out, is still in pilot form. We definitely experienced some challenges with that. We've got some new implementation partners and really appreciate the community sticking with us on that and holding us accountable on that. If you are getting calls, please let me know. Be happy to give you an update on that program. Solar for All is another award we've talked a lot about. We are awarded to share in a $156 million grant with our partner cities Savannah and Decatur with our lead applicant partner Capital Good Fund. We just had a meeting about that on Friday. Some dispersments have gone out. There may be some activity that we're able to move forward with, but nothing to tell us right now that we may or may not still be on track for an April-May official launch. So again, we're kind of day-to-day, week-to-week on anything related to federal funding. So one of our goals remains fresh, affordable food access within half a mile, half an accessible mile, as we try to get the language right, of all Atlantans by 2030. Our Director of Urban Agriculture, J. O. Lu Baiwu, in my office, works directly with the Department of City Planning and continues to on Atlanta. The way that we're able to measure this goal is really working with the Food Systems Planning Team now within DPW. We were able to bring on the staff member through American Rescue Plan Act funds and some of those food and security dollars who ended up being the Food Systems Planner within DCP. So we've had a lot of meetings recently about them, about how we are measuring. You know, when you say half a mile before, we thought we were really close to that goal. And it's like, well, if someone's on this side of I-20, but the grocery store is on this side of I-20, that's really not half, that's really not half an accessible mile. So there's been a lot of ground truthing for what that means on the ground and through the data. So we're looking forward to our partnership to bring some updates to that fresh food And innovation and partnerships continue. We are still working with Hertz as we launched Hertz Electrifies Atlanta two years ago around Earth Day. They have continued to work with Atlanta College and Career Academy. When they started the partnership, they donated an electric vehicle to the auto maintenance program. They've worked through that, and now they are working on integrating the EV maintenance curriculum into the auto program at Atlanta College and Career Academy. So we're super excited to continue working with Hertz to communicate out about a lot of the successes with that program. So our federal funding outlook, I've spoken about this a little bit. These are, this is a list of everything that we have been awarded, everything that we are still in the process for. So for instance, Solar for All was one of three funding opportunities within the greenhouse gas reduction fund. So that was Solar for All. We went out, went after that. Now, there are two opportunities that are really about municipal funds, setting up green banks. We've been working really closely with Invest Atlanta and our advisors, that Sustainable Capital Advisors, to respond to a couple of calls for funding opportunities specifically focused on municipal investment funds. So we're really excited about the opportunities with that, particularly looking at some market building activities and potentially some pre-development activities as we really this year want to focus on our housing stock and how we make sure we are supporting our developer and builder community in developing climate resilient, affordable housing. We know that without utility affordability, there is no housing affordability. Inability to afford utilities is a driver of displacement. That is again why it is so important to have programs like our Weather Eyes program working in partnership with Invest Atlanta and their owner-occupied rehab program as well. So just the federal funding outlook, I think we know is day-to-day. There are a number of actions, amicus brief filings and things like that that we have been approached. As we know, Mayor Dickens is now a Vice Chair of Climate Mayors. We are trying to align with them on a lot of their activities. The Executive Office and City Attorney are obviously vetting, you know, those opportunities in the best interest of the city. So stay tuned for more of that. And so this year, I've talked a lot about our priorities, just to recap, federal funding implementation as it comes, operationalizing our goals as we update them. I also want to talk about the climate budgeting process, which is an exciting process we've been working on and learning about over the last year in partnership with our Sustainable Capital Advisors and our Department of Finance. It is a, not requesting a budget line item, it is a governance process and will give us a mechanism to really look at all the things we are already doing across the city as it relates to sustainability and climate resilience. Certifying our new construction as lead in alignment with our sustainable building ordinance, there's a cost to that. We want to capture that. Transitioning our fleet to electric vehicles, there's a cost to that. Also, some rebate opportunities through direct pay that we applied for, for the first time, where hopefully we'll get some dollars back into the city for some of these clean energy tax credits that were available to local governments for the first time this year thanks to the Biden-Harris Inflation Reduction Act. So a lot of exciting things happening this year and happy to take any questions.
I'll open it up to my colleagues. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Very ambitious, but very necessary. Regarding the relieving, helping relieve the energy burden, I know that we had authored some funding to support families and households. I think we set aside, I think a half a million dollars, is that right? What's the status on that? What's been the deployment? Any feedback or any good news to report?
Yeah, so no deployment yet. When we actually passed those dollars, the potential shift at the federal level, those winds were becoming more clear. So thought it really important not to start debiting from that until we had a clearer picture of really what we needed and where. So I think that, I don't think, over this first quarter, what we are working on in wrapping up the Weather Eyes pilot that was funded by American Rescue Plan Act dollars, that's going to give us the real picture of where can we and where should we be directing some of those dollars? And we'll also have a better picture of what is going to happen ideally with Solar for All and those dollars. So, you know, I could, I could spend $500,000 like right here in 10 minutes on a number of projects. So just want to be real careful about our plan for that first.
Okay. I appreciate the thoughtfulness on that. I think you're having to thread a needle because, you know, some of the federal dynamics could actually impact the households that we actually are looking to support and benefit. So timing will be important, that we don't want to be too far behind when they're feeling the financial pressures already. So I just leave to y'all, I'd be curious to hear once y'all get ready to start moving that, what the strategy is, priorities and approaches. Because I, I know that Councilmember Bakhtiari, and I've talked about, you know, that was always meant to be initial seeding. So we're going to need to know impact in order to be able to advocate for additional funding later. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Just staying there before I pass to my other colleagues. To understand that the new federal administration are making decisions to cut federal programs, and it looks like today they've extended things to September, so that gave us a deadline. We have to put shovels in the ground. I know we've done a lot of planning, but it's, we, similar to Councilmember Wong and Councilmember Bakhtiari, that was the initial step, to see it not spent yet is a, and to see not decisions made yet, and knowing what, what, what Mr. Trump is planning to do means we need to move faster. Opening up the questions for my colleagues there? I have a few. First, the presentation had a few, few things that if, for the next presentation, if you can, take a look at your presentation before you send it to us, the notes, some of the, some of the things that were on there, I don't think you wanted us to see.
Okay.
Thank you for that. The next thing I had was similar to that, making sure that we spend the funding. We know that September, we have a few deadlines that the administration have put out. They are trying to figure out how to stop a lot of things. And so as a city, we are trying our best to continue to be a progressive city, continue to help people. They're about to try to stop us. And if we haven't spent the money with the, even not looking at our state, the Dodge, where they're looking at different programming. So they're trying to stop our stuff. So let's spend as much money, let's spend it and let's be as intentional as possible. But we've, we're now looking for the results, just as they are. And if they see the results of money sitting in a pile, just like we're seeing the results of money sitting in a pile, they're going to want to move it and put it in other places. So thank you again, and thank you for the report. Thank you for the work you're doing. One last thing, the 20, from 2030 to 2035, that's a big jump. I know 2030 has been a year that we've made sure we've said the last three years. Now 2035 is a big number that's on here. So if you can, give me, not, not now, if you can give us this committee a one-pager or a few paragraphs of why the switch went from 2030 to 2035.
Switch for?
Clean Energy Act.
So there hasn't been a switch, but there are interim targets. So the goal is to achieve 100% clean energy by 2035, but there are interim target goals.
Okay.
So for 2025, we're meant to be at 30%. 2030, we're meant to be at 50%, and then make the other 50% jump. So that's what that on slide six or seven.
And if I go to slide, behind slide six or seven, there are some notes that talk about some of the things there too. So thank you again for explaining it there, but the notes, they go...
Slide 11.
Yep, they go into details in the notes too. Thank you again.
Okay.
Our next presentation for today comes from the Office of Public Works, the Quarterly Report.
Good morning to this committee. Kintora Garman, interim commissioner for the Department of Public Works, delivering our quarterly report for today. I want to start out by thanking this committee. There are specific members of this committee who reached out to members of our staff, leadership and otherwise, throughout the winter storms, checking in on them, greatly appreciated. Also contacting our retirees in honor of their service to the city, and also some retirees, not in great number, but in their passing, and checking in on them. Also want to point out, in this particular presentation, we, there were some takeaways from our last quarterly, specifically around suite performance. Councilmember Shook showed great emphasis there, so we have some detail there that we will be pointing out. In addition, on our QAQC, Chairman Lewis, you had some specificity there in changing from 70% to 80%. That is reflected in this particular quarterly. Also, glad to see that this committee is utilizing our DPW Request Escalations team, and there is some detail there. Just want to point out those things as we start out our presentation. This is our word chart. As you can see, we have three deputy commissioners focusing on three primary divisions of the department, Fleet Services, Solid Waste Services, and Special Operations, each one of those areas falling under one of the deputy commissioners. Here we have some of our priorities and accomplishments vis-à-vis projects the department has been actively working on and their respectively delivery timelines. Some of these initiatives include route optimization vis-à-vis our telematics software, Rubicon, which is now known as RouteWare, and then our fleet rightsizing and various beautification projects under Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. Moving into our solid waste services, at this point, we will begin a very heavy metrics-based analysis for each particular division of the department, and we'll walk through this So curbside collection performance metrics, the December deployment of ATL Connect, I want to point this out because this is impactful to the data throughout. ATL Connect, also known in the private sector as Microsoft Dynamics, influence case creation enclosure data, introducing some potential discrepancies that directly impact SLA reporting AIM, and ATL 311 has given special attention to this for the past couple of months and opened up a Teams channels wherein we can communicate more directly with them about some of the challenges. In addition, we do want to point out that we have worked through a winter storm during this period that also impacts our delivery of services. But from October to December of 2024, curbside case volume decreased by 21%, with DPW successfully closing 90% of all cases. This was 6% lower than the previous quarter. The explanations previously provided will give that level of detail. SLA compliance for curbside cases stood at 76%, reflecting a 2% decline from the previous quarter. Moving into our special operations collections performance, you all may notice specifically as right-of-way illegal dumping and also our street sweepers falls upon the special operations. From October to December of 2024, special operations managed nearly 2,000 cases, achieving an overall resolution rate of 90%, with 78% closed within SLA. Illegal dumping was the most common case type, however, total requests steadily declined throughout the quarter, culminating in a 78% decrease. Specific to our cart delivery metrics, from October to December of 2024, special operations managed over 5,500 cases, resolving 90% overall within 86% closed within SLA. Garbage cart requests were the most common case type, however, total requests steadily declined throughout the quarter, showing a 79% decrease. Moving over to our bulk collections overview, we managed over 9,600 bulk requests, averaging 104 collections per day, a decrease of 73% from the, from the, from the previous quarter. The most requested item and services areas have remained consistent since January. The bulk collection tonnage reached 11,104, 105 tons. Moving over to our suite metrics. From October to December, 81% of the 3,000, 98 cases were closed, with 51% resolved, resolved within SLA. That was a 1% decrease from the previous quarter. Suite officers proactively identified 26% of total cases during canvassing throughout their NPUs, reflecting a 13% increase from the prior quarter. Additionally, 38% of the 579 pending cases are still awaiting reinspection. The notice of violations overview. 2,519 cases were created, with 1,163 resulting in a notice of violation representing 46% of total cases. During this period, suite increased the percentage of notices, notices issued by 61%, reflecting significant progress in enhancing enforcement efficiency in issuing violations. Back to the previous slide. From October to December, just want to point out there were 2,519 cases were created specific to suite. Moving over to Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. KABC hosted 45 community cleanups, engaging 541 volunteers who contributed to a total of 1,578 service hours. During this period, 32 miles were cleaned and over 10 tons of trash were collected. Do want to point out that this particular division of the organization has a horticulturist, a senior landscape architect, and a gardener. All three new positions within this area have impacted our ability to deliver a quality, quality service. Office of Fleet Services. This chart here shows time spent by department. A total of 24,951 wrench time hours were logged, reflecting a 12% increase from the previous quarter, directly impacted by our increase in mechanics one, two, and three within Fleet Services. DPW and APD accounted for 53% of the maintenance hours, with 28% and 29, and 25% of the total, respectively. Other departments, including fire rescue, aviation, watershed, parks, and rec, contributed 40% of the total maintenance hours. Carrying on with fleet performance metrics, fleet completed 8,150 repairs, reflecting a 10% decrease from the previous quarter. As I noted earlier, we were impacted by a winter storm. Moving over into fleet equipment purchased, fleet received 84 fewer vehicles and pieces of equipment compared to the previous quarter. That completes the fleet component of the presentation. We'll move over into QAQC on the performance management. In August, the 2024 COA internal right-of-way crews assumed responsibility for all collector and arterial rows. Their evaluation scores consistently exceeded what was then the 70% passing goal, prompting an increase of target of 80% for December of 2024. This was specific to a request from this committee, again, more specifically from Chairman Lewis, and we have risen to the occasion. This quarter, they achieved a 90% average evaluation score, reflecting a 1% improvement from the previous quarter. In our customer service performance metrics, less than 7% of the 13,976 cases were prematurely closed, escalated, or resulted in a complaint. Both premature closures and escalations declined to under 1% by the end of the quarter, while complaints steadily decreased to 1% of total cases. Moving on, speaking to our command center, specific to our solid waste services division, the solid waste team exceeded the 85% tablet utilization goal, achieving an oppressive 99% average for the quarter. In addition, route logging remained consistently high, with 98% completion in October and 99% in both November and December, with only 1% to 2% of routes unlogged. These results underscore the team's strong operational efficiency and consistency in tracking and also adoption of the new technologies that we've implemented within the department. Moving on to our street sweeping. The special operations teams exceeded the 85% of tablet utilization goal. Again, this is another division within DPW. They also exceeded an exceptional 99% average for the quarter, and route logging remained consistently high with 98% completion in October and both November, December, leaving only 1% to 4%. This was slightly lower than what was reflected for solid waste services. But again, this, these results emphasize the team's strong operational efficiency and consistent tracking of performance and adoption of new technologies within the department. Moving over to our safety division. This gets into the training and performance metrics for safety. Total training hours increased significantly over the quarter, with 165 students completing general safety training, 162 in flagrant training, and 714 in defensive driving. The general safety and flagrant courses averaged three hours per student, with the defensive driving courses averaging about six hours per student. This growth reflects a significant investment by the department in safety and skill development for our workers. Moving over into the finance area of the department. The Department of Public Works remained within budget for the quarter, spending 53% of the allocated funds. Solid Waste and General Fund had expenditures of 49% and 51% respectively, while Fleet Services spent 21 million or 61% of its $35 million budget. Water and wastewater spent 40% of its total budget. As a special note, the 61% expenditure in Fleet Services is attributed to the increased commercial repairs for aged equipment. Repairers exceeded the annual maintenance and repairs allocation by 152%, totaling 1.6 million over the 3 million budget. We certainly expect to see, as time progresses for mechanics one, two, and three, that more of this work is done in-house to Fleet Services, therefore reducing any measure of dependency of great impact with our vendor partners. Moving over to our special operations, Operation Clean Suite performance metrics. Operation Clean Suite continues its efforts to clean and de-litter designed or designated areas affected by debris and illegal dumping across the city. Community volunteers helped collect 25 tons of litter and cleared 133 miles of roadway. We cleared 801 illegal dumping sites, serviced over 64,000 right-of-way receptacles, and maintained 1,351 miles of right-of-way. Our special events during the quarter, we hosted a Halloween outreach event at Rodney Cook Senior Park, which created a festive atmosphere and strengthening community connections. KABC also worked in, in partnership with Hilton, wherein a grant was received, which continues to move KABC forward. Focusing on our frontline heroes, DPW supported multiple city of Atlanta departments, including ADOT and APD during the winter storm response. The fleet team equipped vehicles with snow plows, installed and removed snow chains, and maintained our trucks. While the special operations team assisted ADOT with road treatments, all teams remain prepared to assist as needed to ensure a safe and efficient storm response. Of course, there are certainly lessons learned whenever we have these kinds of events, and we have partnered with other entities within the city to put together proper planning and strategy for future events. That concludes our quarterly report. Again, thank you to this committee for their support during these events and reaching out to staff to check in on them and to ensure that DPW continues to stand strong and move forward.
The Department of Public Works has become a sign of effective and efficiency in the city of Atlanta, so thank you for this report. I'll open it up for my colleagues, but as you, I, I asked my question last, but I want you to think about the one thing that I didn't see here was the jobs report. How, I want to be known for jobs, I'm known for jobs, so every time we need to know about jobs. Any of my colleagues have any questions first? Councilmember, Councilmember Ishay Collins.
Thank you so much, and this is a great presentation. I truly appreciate this information. Just really quickly, and I think it probably goes to Councilwoman Lewis's question in terms of jobs and support. I know we, I know there, I know you guys are doing amazing work with illegal, with the illegal dumping issue and the cleaning in that area, and we're still getting calls. How can we, I guess, you know, for as council, how can we best support tho, support those efforts? And I do, I was looking at the financial report, and you're, I, I guess you are tracking in terms of budget spending by the end of this fiscal year, and so just curious to know, like, how can we best do, you know, what are some of the ways that we can support the work so that you all feel supported to respond to community needs more? That'd be great.
No, wonderful questions, and I'll attempt to take them one at a time. First thing I, I will say is, you know, DPW touches households of this city probably more so than, than any department. And so, reaching out to staff, Councilwoman Boone is very connected to our department and consistently checks on our folk, and that, that sends a consistent message to the staff that they are certainly not forgotten. In addition, we created a, a, our own internal escalations team. There is an email, DPW request, if you were to just type that in. It's a way specifically for council members in this committee to reach out and say, hey, there is a particular issue, there is an escalation that I want to connect you all to. And today we have a team, and some of them are here in the audience, we have a team of six persons that are on that, that are on that team. And they follow the particular escalation or complaint from beginning to end. It's also an opportunity for council members to drive particular cleanups and engagements in their area. And so if you reach out to that team, we can get things scheduled. I mentioned the horticulturist, our senior landscape architect, and our gardener. So there are beautification efforts that we have worked on. Again, Councilwoman Boone can speak to this because we've had those kinds of efforts in her area, Chairman Lewis, we've had some efforts in his area. And so these are ways in which we can partner for the beautification of the city and the continual clean, cleanliness of the city. And we welcome the feedback always. We get more feedback from, 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 from some areas than other, but we welcome that feedback. It gives us an opportunity to improve.
Council, Councilmember Andrea Boone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to thank this department for doing a wonderful, wonderful job. Will you please ask your staff to stand at this time?
Please.
Let's give them a hand. Phenomenal, phenomenal, phenomenal work, very responsive to the citizens. We hear you all at the NPU meetings, and as we move about in the community, we just want to thank you all so much, especially in the Adamsville quarter, when we have a lot of illegal dumping, and in the Peyton Road area. We like to thank you all again.
Thank you. Thank you. If, if I may just point out one, one, one level of specificity, just because quite a bit of attention was given to illegal dumping in the city, and I do want to note and state that our suite team is fully staffed up, and I believe the metrics noted in the suite part of the presentation will show some levels of improvement, and we want to continue that effort. And so the next time that we are in front of you, we want, we will hope to be communicating an increase in the effectiveness of that team.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, and your team for the great work. I want to jump off of that, what you just were talking about, the suite team and the illegal dumping. Is that where we're going to see potentially the impact of Councilmember Overstreets's recent legislation regarding, you know, the addition, it still wasn't real clear to me, but the addition of yard trimmings to the definition of litter? Is that, will that fall under you in terms of enforcement?
So there, there, there is a measure of enforcement under our code that will experience a measure of impact. We have not yet determined fully what that would be, but it, it is fair to say that there will be an impact.
Okay, so that's good. And so your suite team, it will be, would be the ones that would be charged with kind of looking at that and, and enforcing her legislation, correct?
Um, to a, to a measure. There, there is another entity within the city-
Okay.
-that would drive a measure of enforcement of that, but we can give you the specificity as to what DPW-
No, it's, I mean, honestly, I think just in the next quarterly report, I'm, I'm just curious to see and track that legislation and-
Absolutely.
-what it results in, and I'm just trying to understand where in your presentation next quarter I, I would, might start seeing that, and so, okay. In terms of the financial snapshot, you may have talked about this, Fleet Services is running, looks like a little over pace, kind of the projected burn rate at this point in the year. I would have expected a 50% use of the budget, we're at 61. Is there a particular thing you attribute that to, and, and is that pace going to hold through the end of the year, that fiscal year, sorry?
So, so the increase, again, goes to our commercial repairs, specifically for aged equipment. We did note that the vast majority of these repairs are specific to our own fleet, in addition to working with fire and rescue.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, sorry, go ahead, complete.
And so one of the things that, that we have done, and I work with, with this administration, is to do an assessment of all of our equipment and end of life. I think without question, our mechanics do an awesome job when it comes to maintaining, but all equipment has an end of life. And so the older the equipment get, it simply drives up the cost. My thought is, is that with the increase- My thought is, is that with the increase of the number of mechanics, particularly those skilled mechanics two and three, it will help to reduce the total amount of spend that we're experiencing, we're working with our vendors. But more specifically, when you look at, let's see, spending 50% of the allocated funds, I think that pretty much covered it.
So, okay, so you attributed to aging fleet, which I, you know, acknowledge, that's not going to change. I mean, that, that is a steady state as well, and so I think if I heard you correctly, where you think we might bring, be able to bring this back into budget by the end of the year is by hiring and then pulling back on what we use in terms of outside vendors to repair, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct. These were specific efforts that we worked on with Chairman Lewis, where we were able to increase the number of mechanics, and so it does take some time to see the results of that. But the idea is, not only in fleet, but in other divisions of the department, that we want to increase our headcount. What our research shows is that DPW workers indeed do it better. And so we want to invest, give the good men and women of Atlanta opportunity to serve, and therefore pull back on our contractual engagements.
Okay, no, that makes, I mean, that's, we've been talking about that in terms of staffing levels, vacancies, you know, rightsizing and all that, and you're right, I mean, because it's, it should be less expensive to do it ourselves and to farm it out, or pay overtime or get extra help, so, okay, we'll be watching that. Solid waste, I see that we're tracking, I, we've now entered the period where we're going into bi-weekly yard trimming pickup, correct?
That's correct.
When do we start that? Was that January 1, or is it earlier than that?
That's correct, that's correct.
January 1? Okay, so I, that number, I would, the impact and the savings from that, we'll start seeing in the next quarterly report that you present, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, Mr. Chair, that concludes my questions, thank you.
Thank you, I think I'll start on your last set of questions on the financial page, the mechanics one, two, and three. Where are we on mechanics one, two, and three? I'm super proud of that program, super proud of us trying to re-establish us doing stuff in-house in the City of Atlanta, so we can show the country what we can do. So where are we now on that program?
We're at about 90, 95 to 97%, where the vacancies within our fleet area have been met. And again, we are, of course, there is some attrition that we, that any organization experiences, but we're very proud of the work that we've done in filling those, what were thought to be very difficult positions to fill, but I think our partnership with your office and with other entities within the city, particularly some of our technical colleges, have allowed us to, to be very aggressive into your results desire.
And it's just some labor idea, if you look across the country, where labor, labor does is typically try to train from within, because the person within is probably going to stay a little bit longer. That good pension that we've been building.
Absolutely.
The, the, it, once again, I think it's better for us to train our own folks so we can stop contracting out these services, because our hourly workers, salary workers here in the City of Atlanta is cheaper than any contract that we're dealing, that we're divvying out, and the contracts, we, some of us are happy in some, certain areas in the city of what we're getting, but on the South Side, I was never happy with what I was getting, so I'm excited about where we're, if we're moving. And without this mayor, without this administration helping us, we wouldn't be able to do this. So thank you to the administration as well for being a part of it. The next, Councilmember Boone has a few questions first before.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we congratulated Mr. Gregory Gray on 30 years, a very, very important employee on the ground, so just wanted to make sure we congratulate Gregory Gray.
Is he here? Mr. Gray here?
He's not, he's not, I don't think he's in the chamber today.
Okay, so I'll make sure that mechanics one, two, and three are Atlanta Tech and District 12. Thank you to that partnership with Dr. Seals and the City of Atlanta to fix our, fix our issues, our longstanding issues, I think we're going to be able to solve. The next thing I want to go to was the suite performance metrics.
Yes.
The, the canvassing has worked. The canvassing in my community, I see our suite officers, and I can see the increase, so the canvassing in my community is working. I'm getting calls from people seeing, seeing something they've never seen, they've never seen City of Atlanta suite officers walking through the community and driving through, so please keep that up and keep them as visible as possible.
Absolutely.
The, because also they're able to catch some of our issues that we haven't had, that we, that we haven't. Illegal dumping in our area for the special ops collection performance metrics, you, that, that's went up, but we still have a issue on pay growth that we've been trying to solve. So if you have any funding for cameras, if we can talk about any kind of cameras, because we've been cleaning it up every single day it looks like, and so the dumping just continues, so if we can look to put together a, a action plan for spots that are continually getting dumping even after we clean it up would be helpful for us. Evaluation score is going up to, my, my request was 80% from the 70% stagnant rate we're at, to see us go up to 90% lets us know what we can do. And once again, I like the 80%, I'm, I'm good with a B at all times, but to see this 90 shows the effectiveness and efficiency of our department, and I truly appreciate you all for that. Time spent by department on maintaining vehicles, amazing slide, please keep this slide in the presentation, don't move this slide out, because it shows what you're doing, when you're doing it, that way whenever departments come up, we can say, hey, the, we're spending 28% of our hours on APD, we're spending 25% on DPW and other departments, so please keep this slide coming so we can be specific on how we're trying to fix vehicles in different departments. Training performance metrics, let's highlight this, I know you all have built an amazing social media team.
Absolutely.
Social media rivals my personal social media from what I'm looking at, but if you can, highlight this as much as you, as much as possible, because one of the things I know a lot of our constituents are nervous about, or not nervous about, have seen a lot of things dropping in the street, and they don't, they want to know how safe, how up to date our, our city employees are, so please highlight this if you can.
Absolutely.
Lastly, I start off by talking about the job report, where are we right now on our vacancy rate?
So, as a matter of fact, we, we have a meeting today where we're combing through not only vacancies, but also where we stand with extra help within the department and moving them into permanent positions. I'm happy to provide the committee with a detailed report either later today or tomorrow to give you the specificity in relation to every position within the department.
Yeah, I, I truly take that personal.
Yes.
The, the vacancy report or the amount of people we actually have job, with jobs in the City of Atlanta, I saw the crime rate drop in my district as I saw your vacancy rate go down. And I know we've been having job fairs, bringing them directly to people, directly to the community, and so I think they, they, I think they're equating with each other, so please don't take that slide out. Please continue to highlight the good work you're doing, if, and even if it's dropped, we can't fix it unless we know what it is, because last year when we saw the vacancy rate drop to where it was, we had one job fair, we were able to fill open positions, and we were able to start this program to fix our trucks. So if we can, please put the vacancy rate back into this.
Absolutely.
Are there any more questions from our colleagues? Thank you again, Commissioner Garmon, for this report, for this quarterly report, I look forward to the next one, and hopefully jobs will be involved, because we are all looking at your jobs, trying to make sure that you're continuing the effective and efficient work. Thank you to the men and women of DPW for your service to the City of Atlanta, and let's continue to keep this thing moving.
Thank you, thank you all.
Before we go into our next report, came to my attention, and I know, last year I talked about one of my, one of our good assistant commissioners who had about five jobs, and Commissioner Reggie Wells. Congratulations to Assistant Commissioner of Watershed Reggie Wells for being named the Commissioner of DeKalb County. And so, you can clap for him if y'all, I know he's y'all friend. I remember saying last year he had 10 jobs, and we needed to pay him a few more dollars, and DeKalb County's got an amazing person, he would truly be missed in the City of Atlanta, truly be missed, but thank you again. The next, and I wanted to get that out with his colleagues here, the next report will be coming from Community Access Media Update, Councilmember Jabari Samama.
Thank you. Hey, Councilmembers, I'm not going to take much time, I'm going to let Dr. Samama give his presentation, but just wanted to come before you and give you update on that one. Thanks always to Dr. Samama for his work on the Blue Ribbon Commission, including my name and everything, right? Austin Wagner, Deputy Chief of Staff to Mayor Andre Dickens, I always forget that, sorry.
Thank you.
So, much thanks to Dr. Samama for his work on the Blue Ribbon Committee that officially came to the close at the end of the year. We received his recommendations and published those on our website for public viewing. The, the big hits there are a lot of things that we're already working on, which she'll touch on in his presentation as well. The channel is back up and accepting, accepting programming, so that is running currently. Of course, we want to make it more robust and continue that, but we're happy that that is up and accessible to the public. We are working on upfitting, working with Dean to upfit a space in Two Peachtree so that people have a place to come in and record and do their programming in a public capacity, working to get that staffed up as well with, with current funding. And then, of course, we're looking forward into the new year as we go through the budget process to right-size the, the budget appropriation from the city towards this, as well as trying to work with some outside partners to ensure that we can really fund this in the right way, and work with some of our tech partners, work with some of our colleges and universities to try to invest as much as we can into this program, and to get it back to a place where we're proud and Atlanta can be a jewel of community access media, so. And also proud to say we're going to continue working with Dr. Samama through this transition period, so we got through the Blue Ribbon Committee, but as we've said before, no one better to work with us than the person who started this all along. So happy to work with Dr. Samama as we continue through this transition period, which our goal is to have all this done by July 1st, that we can have a new vendor set up, have something permanent, and, and move forward, right? Kind of end this chapter, we've talked about this for quite some time, as we all know, and we're all ready to move into something that's a much more permanent solution, and I think with Dr. Samama's leadership, we'll be able to, you know, continue to move towards that by July 1st. That's, that's our goal there. I will leave that here, Dr. Samama's got a presentation, a little bit more on what the recommendations had to say, and what he's going to be working on over the next few months as we continue to get this up and running in a, in a more permanent way.
Mr. Wagner, I truly appreciate working with you all on this.
Yeah.
To see, I know a lot of folks are mad at us that it didn't come back on air that day, it took us a few weeks later, but this is a huge opportunity for us as a city, and to, we can't lose this opportunity. The communications of the world have changed, and we're stepping into it right now, so last year, I know we, we started off boxing almost, talking about this, and we were able to bring in Dr. Jabari Samama who wrote this, and I was happy to read his book about public access television, I can look at you and tell you've probably read it as well.
Yeah.
And so I'm looking forward to where we're going, I like where we are now.
Yeah.
And, and I look forward to being a part of some of these programs too, especially, I'm, come on up, Dr. Jabari Samama, I'm looking forward to, to hearing about some of these programs that you, you have planned. Thank you again, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, good morning, Mr. Chair and distinguished members of this committee, welcome, councilperson Collins, is, beg your pardon? Good, very, very good to see you as, as well. I, I was just sitting there enamored by his last presentation, I just heard, I mean, so much of it, I am so interested in, I mean, you talked about the technical college pieces, you talked about the sort of Atlanta training program, I was just, just amazed to hear it all that was going on, so I've got to reorientate myself now from being sort of tied up with that to moving on to this next subject, but I, I am so happy that we're making moves in every department.
And Dr. Samama, that only came out because of a question, we went further into it, so last year we actually gave a presentation, and I'll get that over to you, on the Atlanta Technical College Program with the City of Atlanta to improve the mechanics one, two, and three, a program with the administration, my office, and the Department of Public Works.
And although I'm not up here for this, I want to make sure also you have the benefit of the DeKalb First Program that we developed in conjunction with DeKalb County when I was President of Georgia Piedmont, which is headquartered in, it's very much like what you all were, were talking about, and of course, Dr. Seals was a colleague of mine as well. Let me start out with just a quick, let me make sure I'm doing this right, yeah, quick update on where we are. I, I think you've already heard that we submitted the Blue Ribbon Committee Report to the city on December the 30th. Now, we were through a little bit earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that we looked it over, edited it, and got it in, so we're, we're supposed to get it in by the end of the year, we got it in on December the 30th. We were able to thank all the Blue Ribbon Committee members within that report, is every Blue Ribbon Committee member as, as well as youth council members, young people who were working with us, so from time to time, if you see some of these, these community people who volunteered their time, tell them thank you, I think they did an excellent job. I want to compliment the City Council and compliment the mayor's office and the mayor for allowing the committee to do its work without interference. The recommendations and the work truly reflected the citizens from the private sector, from education, community leaders, and I'm proud to say that those were their recommendations, I think they're great recommendations. We heard from people around the country about those recommendations, asking how could they help, and I think that just reinforces that the committee did a good work in the city by allowing the committee independently to do its work and make its recommendations is serious about this program moving forward. As Deputy Chief of Staff Wagner said, that we're in this transition period now, and to be honest with you, I, I thought after the 31st that we got to report in, that I could go to Hilton Head or something like that and just kind of relax for a while and take it easy. I didn't, I didn't assume that, right now I'd find myself standing in this position, because they said, well, now that y'all have submitted this report, you've got a lot of substantive recommendations, you know you need to stay on, at least during the transition, to help implement some of these recommendations, so I'm glad to do it, and, but come, come July 1st, maybe Councilman Lewis, y'all let me be the Advisory Board Chair or something, but I'll, I'll be beyond the point of implementing and worrying about the operations, I can just help with the oversight to make sure that plan gets implemented in the spirit in which we, we've intended. Now, if you look at the highlights, we talked about the Transition Committee, which will be in effect until July 1st, one of the recommendations, and I, I strongly urge the City Council to, I almost want to say, if you take no other recommendation, take this one, no, but we need you to take all of them, but this is a really important recommendation. We have to create a community advisory and oversight board, that's the city's board. Now, in the plan, I recommended how I thought that, that, that oversight group should be formed with at-large council members and district council members collaborating on a nomination, and the mayor having some nominations, as well as the president of council, but I think that's important, that's kind of, that, that would be the city's board, not to operate the program, but to have oversight, so if there are community complaints, or if there are other types of issues like that, that the city needs to know, you have an independent group, not a group that's operating the program that exists. Now, we once had that in the City of Atlanta called Cable Television Advisory Board, and for some reason that board was closed down. I strongly recommend that we recreate that board, and I'm not lobbying, but that's the kind of board, if I was going to have a long-term future, I probably would like being able to participate in that board myself, long-term, so that, that's a very specific recommendation. Mr. Wagner also mentioned that we are, we've identified a maker space at Two Peachtree, and there are advantages and disadvantages to that, advantages- Advantage is right next to MARTA Station. And these days and ages, accessibility of transit is important. Disadvantage is it's downtown and parking is always an issue. We encourage folks to use transit. But the recommendation is not just Two Peachtree Street. The recommendation is that we open up a central hub at Two Peachtree, which I'll show you some mockups in terms of how it's going to look once it gets outfitted. But that we also identify three locations in the community at recreation centers or community centers. And this is an excellent opportunity for council members who know the community centers and recreation centers in their districts to say, we'd like to have one here. And this would be part of a network of community media, makerspace, production facilities. They'll all be tied to a central hub. So community people will be able to come to these community centers and link to the central hub downtown, or they'll be able to come to the central hub and link to the community centers in these respective districts. I know some of you have come with me with recommendations already, but that's going to be important in terms of overall concept. We also are recommending that the city now, not yesterday, not tomorrow, now, help us get at least part-time staff so we can staff the facility and begin the training program, oversee the productions, work to have a social media and marketing presence that will rival, Councilmember Lewis, I heard him talking about his social media presence. That's exactly what you need today to market and promote. And in just a second, I will tell you why. And we're also, and we want a large volunteer program, never a big, large staff, but a small, smart, nimble staff that can bring in volunteers. I mean, when you've operated this program for over 30 years, almost 40 years, there are a lot of people who have affection for the program, who've been involved, who've been active. There are a lot of young people now who are doing very interesting things on their smartphones. Let's get all of them in and a volunteer and pull this together as a real community event. But it won't happen at Seth. You're going to have to have at least a vest and a staff to be able to do the facilitation and work to build the large volunteer organization. That's part of our recommendation. And then, one that I know that Councilperson Collins will like is that we are recommending that there be an education consortium that will be led primarily by our wonderful higher education institutions in the city, with one of them taking lead and being fiscally responsible, but building a management consortium that will be able to administer community media long-term. And right now, we're having real productive discussions with CAU, Georgia Tech, Georgia State University, and of course, Atlanta Technical College. And most of these colleges were recommended, I mean, were involved with our Blue Ribbon Committee. So they are ready to stay with this long-term. So we'll see what this looks like. Now, I spent a lot of time in the recommendation talking about this consortium and making an argument for why I think it's really important. They already have payroll. They already have HR. They already do television production training courses. They have expertise in that. And an entity like CAU that has a long history with WCLK, a community media entity that's been in existence since the late 1970s, has a strong argument for these kind of quasi-educational, community, media outreach, community journalism efforts. So I think it will be really exciting pulling all of them together, working with the Atlanta Public School System, working with other private charter schools, et cetera. And that's part of the recommendation. So I will ask that you take a look at that because we spent quite a bit of time talking about that and also speaking about a way that we would be able to manage that. The... Am I stuck or what? I'm hitting my forward button and nothing happens. Let me try this, see what happens. Did it move? That did move. Okay, let me go back. Let me just go back one. It moved first, and now it's not moving, it's stuck, which is why I always bring... Oh. Okay, there we go. Good. Another recommendation is a recommendation for the funding that we are recommending. And I don't know if we are... I think we are somewhat aligned with the administration, but I'm not totally sure about that. But we are, there's kind of a ballpark average figure for funding in a country, which is about $600,000. There's an argument that could be made that a city of this size, with all that's going on, should be operating on a budget that's more than that. But one of the recommendations that we're making is that the city, the city puts about half a million dollars for the operation, another $100,000 for capital, and another $55,000, which could come from non-general fund sources for programming in support of this program. I know that council members and certainly the mayor have strong, positive, effective relationships with the private sector. And I know that there are specific areas that where there's synergy between the city and the private sector. For example, I know the city received recently a grant for youth involvement in climate. And that's exactly the kind of program that I'm talking about. It's not general fund money. It's philanthropic money in partnership with the city. And I think we should think of the third party as this community media entity and how wonderful it would be if we could identify some sources for programming and work with the Community Access Program and young people to do a podcast or videocast or some multimedia production that they can learn how to do and they could work together in a community access center at Two Peachtree or one of the locations within the community. That's the kind of program, partnership with the city, that I am recommending. I think that if we look at community access in its totality, that is educational access, community access, and government access, and the city sees that we have a vested interest in all of those forms of access being successful. Not that we just fund you and you go out and do your thing and, you know, as long as we're hearing any complaints, nobody brings us no bad news, that's fine. I am recommending in this recommendation that we value community access the same way we value government access. That's the community's voice. In government access, we're speaking to the community. In community access, the community is speaking to us. Both of them are important. So therefore, I think there's a vested interest in the city's part to ensure that not only do we have sufficient money for operation and capital, but also that we have some impact in the programming through the funding that we might bring through our philosophic, through our private sector partners. It's another way of kind of looking at it. It's a new way. We didn't really have that in the past. But I think that I would recommend you give serious consideration of that because I think it's in the city's best interest to do it, as well as it's in the community's best interest to do it. Let me just say a couple other things, and I will close this off. That we've already talked about the channels up and running right now. And this slide here is just a slide on sort of the process of how we got from where we were in January 1st to where we are now. Where we are now, you can literally go to Channel 24 and there's programming on there. In fact, I was uploading some of my old programming yesterday. But it's a milestone. It's a major milestone. And Councilman Lewis talked about sort of the shadow boxing that went on in the beginning, and that did happen. But this is a new technology and platform that was built from scratch. Mr. Jay Pound, who is your city's broadcast engineer, helped build the coding for it from, it's really quite remarkable. So right now, any citizen, anywhere in the city, quite frankly, anywhere in the nation, but we call it non-citizens in the City of Atlanta, can go to the website and upload a program automatically. They don't have to leave their house. They could do it from their bedroom. They could do it from their living room. You all might want to just experiment with it to see how user-friendly it is. But it's remarkable, and it took a little time to get it up, to build it, to test it, but now it's forever. And I'd much rather take a month or so to do it right than to try to do it quick. And what we need help now from every city council member, the mayor and everyone, is to say, we're up and running. You can upload your programming now. And it's very simple to do. And I'm glad we have this platform, and I'm glad we have the 25, 30, or 40 or so programs already. But we need 500. In order to build that up, we're going to need to get the word out because we've been down for two years that we're up now and we're running. And you don't have to go to a physical location anymore. You can upload digitally. And that's a capability that we did not have before. The makerspace at Two Peachtree Street now is just an empty room, just an empty room with a counter at the front. Nice control point. So if you look at the next slide, that's just a mockup of things that you can do. And the slide to the right, it's kind of small and you can't see it. But it shows you how you can have multiple multifunctional activities going on in the same room. You could have meeting space going on in front of the building. You can have editing booths against the wall. You can have enough room for two or three different set pieces in that one facility. So it doesn't really take a whole lot of room now in these days and age to get a makerspace up and operating. We're working now to try to get this up and operating by the end of the month or the 1st of March. And we can build and scale it up over time. The mayor and maybe some city council members too. And I'm sorry that they have this logo called Magic City. I don't believe it's that Magic City. I don't believe it's that Magic City. But it shows you...
That's definitely the logo.
How you can go from an empty room like this pretty quickly to a makerspace like this with a blue wall and portable lighting and kind of multiple minimalist look, which is kind of cool and hip today. So by the, to take out the Magic City and put our new name, ATL Community Media up there instead of Magic City, it can look very much like that. And for our community centers, where we'll have the mini hubs that will tie into the major hub, we don't necess... It would be wonderful if we had a room like this, but you don't really need a big room like this. If we just had a room where we could put some computers with post-production editing software and then smartphones where we could teach young people how to do videocasts using smartphones, where the technology is so good, the smartphone resolution is almost as good as the cameras that you buy now. And that's something too that we didn't have in the past, but that exists now. But that's kind of how quickly you can get it up and running and functional. So it'll look a little bit like the Cam Kirk Studio. It's just a model, but very similar room, very similar size. Next steps, very, very quickly, we will... We're asking your help and support in promoting that we're up and we're open for business through your social media networks. We want you to help us get the word out. We are finishing the upfitting of the space, which I've already mentioned. We've purchased some equipment already. And by the way, the expectation is that any investment we make in community media now will be handed over to the new operator. So it's not like we're just spinning up community access money for our own sake. All will go to the entity that ultimately will operate access. And we are purchasing more equipment for post-production, location production, and studio production. And as I mentioned, soft opening of the makerspace, where all you will be there and the mayor and everyone. Hopefully, we can have a big ribbon cutting late this month or early in March, hiring the part-time production staff that I mentioned. And I'm not sure exactly what happened here, but let me see if I can read it, build a robust to get them engaged. Not exactly sure what the first line is. Yes. And turn over the permanent operation by July 1st. Now, this last slide, which is interesting. On February 4th, the AJC posted an article on the progress of the Blue Ribbon Committee and the city in bringing, reinventing community access. I could never find it. I kept looking for it, and one of the reasons why I couldn't find it is they had this big picture of Shirley Franklin on the cover of the picture. And it was, of course, during the time where the committee was thinking about how to honor her, and it was very appropriate. So that's actually a photograph from the article, which is called "Atlanta Community: A New Era for Channel 24." It's on February 4th, 2025. And underneath it, speaking of council members and elected officials and public officials, all the way back when Shirley was mayor, it has found Instagram, some photograph of her with for decades, Atlanta Public Television Station aired community-oriented content that featured local leaders like then Shirley Franklin. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think most of you have seen this article now that's on LinkedIn. For those of you who want additional information, I got the websites up there for general information on all the things the Blue Ribbon Committee has done. That's the first website. The second website gives you information on how to upload a program and how to get started in community access television today. Mr. Chair and members of the committee, this concludes my report, and I'll be more than glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Dr. Samama. Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Andrea Boone.
Yes, I would just like to thank Dr. Samama and his team for working tirelessly to get us back up and going. This is very important to the fabric of this city. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ishay Collins.
Yes, thank you so much for this, Dr. Samama. As I'm catching up on everything, the only question I had in terms of, it was the slide with the budget, and I know you talked about like partnerships and opportunities for collaboration and, you know, development to also raise funds. Have you all had any... Have we have you all had any conversations with like, yeah, like WAVE and and some of the others in terms of just opportunities in this in this space to pursue additional dollars to help? And and then, of course, my second question is, how can we also continue to support movement movement for this work?
Absolutely. Some of the some of the funding will come from the cable franchise fee and the franchise agreement that we have that designates some funding for both operations and and capital. City has quite a bit of latitude, but I'm recommending that we set aside that amount. But in in addition to that, you are right, the methodologies used by public television to actually use the channel for for memberships, for fundraising and things of that nature, I believe that we would be allowed to use the channel in very much the same way. And I believe that it's the Atlanta School Board's Educational Collaborative that operates their public television and public radio model that we are proposing to use to be the model to administer community access. That's exactly the model that we use. And then I think that once the city settles on the funding, both for operations and capital, and I hope they give consideration to my suggestion of of philanthropic dollars as well that the city can help bring, that the city that would work with us, and certainly those of you who have been school board members would be excellent, to work with us in developing strong partnerships with the Atlanta Public Schools as well. So we've looked at all of that and we've we've had partnerships in the past. Now we need to reestablish those partnerships and look at those funding models, particularly the membership structure and the manner in which you're able to do, use your channel to promote funding periodically throughout the year.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good model.
Yeah, when I sat on the board for AATC, that's one of the things that we explored. And then it actually aligned with the foundation. So the WAVE Foundation did some fundraising pieces that way. And that where we were able to, we were able to really allocate and apply for funding with through, you know, through the nonprofit 501(c)(3) status that still also didn't interfere with your marketing for ra, you know, raising funds for public television. So just really curious.
And that's why I like the educational model because particularly in higher education as well, there are foundations. Every higher education institution has a foundation that could help and assist in leveraging whatever funds the city provides for for more funding. And the good thing about it is obviously higher educations in K through 12 as well, there's always financial needs. But there's also financing out there that's kind of only available for this kind, you know, technology companies and the newer media companies that can be tapped for this in a way where they may not think about, well, student scholarships or a scholarship for for professor. But yeah, absolutely, we would want to be part of this because it's part of our core core mission. So I think that's a very good suggestion and it definitely is something that we are expecting whoever administers the program to take seriously and to pursue.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. I have a few questions and a few comments. First, thank you for the work that you've done. I I had the opportunity to read that that article that featured that older photo of Mayor Franklin. And what I noticed is some of the things that we did before, and I think the black and whiteness and detail of your art and details you gave us may have missed. You hit on it, but I want to bring some color to it. What we used to do, what what you all created in the city of Atlanta, actually had shows on it. And I want to say some of the shows that we used to have and some of the shows we have currently because I'm I'm excited about some of the on-air shows you already have. So we used to have the American Music Show, and that's where RuPaul Charles Charles got his start, her start. We used to have organizations like the Butler Street YMCA, the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus, and the NAACP regularly having shows and airing shows on this channel. And so currently, just putting ideas to the public, the kind of shows that we're seeking, currently we have a few shows. The one I'm most excited about is the show that's going to be going to black restaurants throughout the city. Could you talk a little bit about the shows that we already have and that one in particular?
Well, well, I I I have been so busy pulling all this together that I haven't spent the amount of time with the programmers that I would like to spend. So I I'll have to open up my notes in in order to to review the details of that program myself. But I would like I I would like to say say this, that there there and that's a good show. That is definitely a good show. And I think shows that animate the community, that promote the good things that are going on in the city that we may not know about or that that the mainstream media would not cover because they don't consider it important or they don't consider it news, it's not bleeding, so it's not leading. We can tell all of those stories. The the coffee shop movement in Atlanta. I'd love to see a community media show now that's set in a different coffee shop. We may have, we may, you may know better than I that, but we may have 15, 16 black-owned coffee shops, you know, around metro Atlanta and other community-based coffee shops that may not necessarily be black-owned, but they're community-based. I'd love to see a community access show that's just shot in a coffee house. I shot a program in the 1990s called Breakfast at Pascal's. We went to Pascal's Coffee House. We interviewed all the regulars who came in and talked about politics, this, that, and the other, some telling the truth, some lying, but that was all part of the culture and the fun there. And I'd love to see shows like that. So it's almost like the imagination of the community. We have a very creative community. Whatever we can imagine, now we have the means of doing it. And like I said, you don't have to go to a physical location anymore. You can set up a podcast-type operation right in your basement or right in your living room or right in your kitchen. The American Music Show that you just mentioned, where RuPaul started on, was done in the basement of of then-councilman James Bond's mother's basement. That's our 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 current council member's uncle. It was done right in the basement. And it was it 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 that's where RuPaul got his start. So right now, that kind of thing could be done even even more so now because you can you can almost shoot it with a smartphone and edit it very, very quickly and then upload it almost without even leaving your home. So the capability of what we have today is just tremendous.
And thank you for bringing I just want to bring some color to that. Thank you for 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 this report. The few few comments to get through, a flyer, if you can get us a flyer so we can promote this. If rec centers, we have two of the largest rec centers in the southeast, Roselle Phan and C.T. Martin, the largest in the southeast of America.
What was the second one you mentioned?
Roselle Phan and C.T. Martin, which has had our off our dep our office of chief officer of sustainability, talk about it today, the two largest in the southeast of America, two of them, Roselle Phan and C.T. Martin. So please don't forget those two. and one last thing, Hosea Williams, Councilmember Hosea Williams, being on that show inspired me so much. And so that's why I'm inspired by this. Thank you for bringing this back. And I look forward to seeing some more shows like Hosea Williams and Mr. Ali Pat on there.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. And let's come back next time and just talk about all of the programming that we're all going to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I believe we lost the quorum. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Can we go to the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is section H, ordinance for first reading. Item number 1, 2501077, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, paving Part II, Chapter II, Article 10, Division four, the Atlanta City Code to authorize the mayor's designated to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement listed herein, trace organic laboratory services with Analytical Environmental Services Incorporated retroactively effective beginning October 5th, 2024, through the exercise of the first renewal option to authorize the mayor's designated exercise, second renewal option under the agreement on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year retroactively effective from October 5th, 2024 through October 4th, 2025, to add funds to the agreement in amount not to exceed $60,000.00 since to acknowledge the vendor's corporate merger with Eurofins Environment Testing Southeast LLC and assumption of contractual duties by Eurofins Environment Testing Southeast LLC, all contract all contract work we charge to and pay from the Fund Department, organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Item number two, 2501078, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the FY 2025 Water and Waste Water Renewal and Extension Fund Budget in amount of $4,688,184.00 to transfer funds from Watershed Reserves for appropriations to add funds to the water supply tunnel project and for other purposes. Item number three, 2501079, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the FY 2025 Water and Waste Water Renewal and Extension Fund Budget in amount of $8,000.00 since to transfer funds from Watershed Reserves for appropriations to add funds to the program management services team project and for other purposes. Item number four, 2501080, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement listed herein, annual contract for municipal solid waste with Republic Services of Georgia Limited Partnership and Genesis Testing Services Incorporated doing business as 3GNL Joint Venture, beginning April 11, 2025, to authorize the mayor's designated to exercise the second renewal option under the agreement on behalf of the Department of Public Works for a term of one year from April 13, 2025 through April 12, 2026, in amount not to exceed $5,000.00 to execute the Fifth Amendment to the agreement to authorize the payment of a rate of $49.90 per ton based rate for municipal solid waste disposal services effective March 1st, 2025. The wave Article 10, Chapter 2, Division 4, the Picking and Real Estate Code of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances to add the city of Atlanta to Departments of Parks and Recreation and Aviation as authorized users and with all contract with all contract work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. This takes us to our regular agenda, section I, ordinance for second reading. Item number five, 2501047, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the FY 2025 Series 2024 Water and Waste Water Commercial Paper Notes Budget in amount of $15,973,925.89 since to transfer funds to Watershed Reserves for appropriations to add funds to the Butler Street Trunk Relief System Improvements Project and for other purposes.
Second. It's been moving properly second. Please open the vote.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable. Mr. Chair, the department requests us to take item number eight in sequence since it's it's the companion paper to item number five. Item number eight requires a substitute. The substitute changes the caption. May I have a motion to bring forth the substitute?
Taken. Please open the vote. Moves by Councilmember One, second by myself. Please bring forth the sub, open the vote to bring forth the substitute.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The substitute before you. The substitute updates the calendar days of the term of the agreement. Item number eight, 25R3139, a substitute resolution by City Utilities Committee, a resolution authorizing the mayor's designated to execute the First Amendment to Agreement listed herein, Butler, Trunk Relief, and Ponce Piedmont New Divergent Sewer Progressive Design Build Services with Ruby Collins Benchmark Joint Venture LLC, on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of term for Phase Two to commence from the date a notice to proceed is issued for a period of 540 calendar days for Phase Two Construction Services for the Progressive Design Build Agreement in amount not to exceed $36,2110.00. All contract work we charge to and pay from the Fund Department, organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Second, moving properly, second by Councilmember Westmoreland. Moving properly, please open the vote. It's been moved by Councilmember One, second by Councilmember Westmoreland.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. Item is favorable on substitute. This takes us back to ordinance for second reading, item number six, 2501053, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone. The requirements of section 2-910 of the Atlanta City Code to retroactively authorize the mayor's designated, including the chief sustainability officer to submit a grant application for the Bloomberg Philanthropies Youth Climate Action Fund Grant on behalf of the city of Atlanta to ratify the application submitted, to authorize the mayor's designated to accept the award of grant funds in amount of $100,000.00 for the purpose of activating youth to design, produce, and implement climate action solutions in Atlanta, to authorize the mayor's designated, including the chief sustainability officer to execute any necessary agreements, to authorize an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 intergovernmental grant fund budget to anticipate and appropriate the amount of $100,000, all grant funds to be charged to and paid from the fund and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Second, moving properly second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The item is favorable. This takes us back to section J resolutions. Item number seven, 25R3138, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor's designated to execute the First Amendment to Agreement listed herein, P Street Creek, West Side 2A, with Ruby Collins Benchmark Joint Venture on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term to commence on a date a notice to proceed is issued for a period of 540 calendar days for Phase Two Construction Services for the Progressive Design Bill Agreement in amount not to exceed $26,559,227.48, all contract work we charge to and pay from the Fund Department, organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item will need to be substituted. The substitute updates the account information.
Move, move to bring forth the substitute. It's been moving properly second, second by Councilmember One, moved by myself. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you.
Second, it's been moving properly second, moved by Councilmember One, second by myself. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. Foyer, zero, nays, the item is favorable. Takes us to item number nine, 25R3140, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated exercise the second renewal option for special procurement agreement listed herein, annual contract for the disposal of treatment waste with Georgia's Waste Systems LLC doing business as Waste Management of Atlanta Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year effective from March 1st, 2025 through February 28th, 2026, in amount not to exceed $9,500,000.0, all contract award we charge to and pay from the Fund Department, organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
It's been moving properly second, moved by Councilmember One, second by Councilmember Wes Morland. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Foyer, zero, nays, the item is favorable. Item number 10, 25...
Comment from Councilmember One. Thank you. I supported that legislation, but I want to flag this one for our new interim CPO, Ms. Houston. This is an example of a procurement that was done in 2021 with, for $4 million, with some renewal options. That's what we're doing today for kind of a similar amount. Yet in 2022, we came back and added $17 million to it. So that's a four-time, four-fold increase the very next year. She and I talked about this in terms of just, we got to get out of this habit of doing an initial procurement, not really scoping the RFP correctly or completely, and then making, I mean, essentially this contract today doesn't even resemble what we went out to bid for. So just want to flag that for, no need for any of the department folks to come up and speak, but we just got to watch it. This is a great example of what she and I talked about. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't think anybody came up to speak to it, but thank you again, Mr. One. Please proceed.
Item number 10, 25R3141, a resolution by City Utilities Committee to amend Resolution 24R4537 adopted by the Atlanta City Council on December 2nd, 2024, and approve per City Charter Section 2-403 on December 11th, 2024, to change the annual compensation rate of pay from $67,444.0 to an annual compensation of rate of pay of $61,818.53 and for other
Second, it's been moving properly second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Foyer, zero, nays, the item is favorable. Mr. Chair, we have two items coming off held. The first is item number 13 on page seven. May I sound the caption?
Please do.
Item number 13, 2501036, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason H. Winston, authorizing the mayor's designated, on behalf of the mayor's Office of Sustainability and Resilience, the additional Bloomberg American Sustainability Cities Grant Award of $120,000.0 to fund expenses related to the base grant accepted pursuant to ordinance 2401627 for the purposes of developing an innovation strategy and a citywide vision for driving progress at the intersection of racial, wealth equity, and climate action to authorize the mayor's designated into any necessary agreements in connection with the acceptance of this grant, to authorize the amendment of the fiscal year 2025 intergovernmental grant fund budget by increasing anticipations and appropriations by $120,000.0 using account numbers as determined by the CFO and for other purposes.
Second, it's been moving properly second, second by Councilmember Matt Wes Morland. Please open the vote. Second, it can be, second by Councilmember Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open, the vote is closed. Foyer, zero, nays, the item is favorable. Item number 14, 25R3087, a resolution by Councilmember Ishay Collins, authorizing the city of Atlanta to donate an amount not to exceed $85,000.0, the 21st Century Leaders Incorporated pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta Charter, to provide micro grants to young people ages 14 to 24 years to design, produce, and implement climate solutions in the city of Atlanta, authorizing the mayor's designated enter into any necessary agreements to effectuate the donation, to authorize the chief financial officer or his designated to make all payments from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Second. Second by Councilmember Ishay Collins. Moved by Councilmember One, second by Councilmember Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
The vote is closed. Foyer, zero, nays, the item is favorable. Mr. Chair, that concludes our legislative items for...
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anything for my colleagues? Mean the journey.